Meeting to order for Tuesday, January 22, 2019. And as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audio tape this meeting must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing nobody, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Earlier this evening, we were in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21-2, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if in open meeting they have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town, the use of sick bank, and we voted positively to approve that. Anybody for weekly briefing? Richard.
Madam Chair, members of the boards, Richard Wastek for the Board of Assessors. Ten days left for you to file those abatements if you have any questions with the value of your property. But tonight, I'm here to ask, Madam Chair, to make people aware that we have agents out in the field looking at properties throughout the community. We outsource that work. It used to be full-time employee, it is now outsourced. The Department of Revenue requires that we look at each property every 10 years. So the town is out there looking at approximately 1,000 properties in various neighborhoods. Now, before these folks go out, they have badges on, they report to the police department to let them know that they'll be in a particular neighborhood. But I was here this week, and I heard a taxpayer here saying, "Well, I don't have to let them into my house." And they are correct, you do not have to allow someone to come into your house. But they're looking, taking an updated picture of the property, they're looking to see that no changes have been made so that we can arrive at a fair market value for every property in town. So if someone calls Town Hall, you're aware that we do have people out in the field, we'll have them there probably for another month. Thank you.
And Richard, you did say they have a badge.
They do have a badge, it's identifiable. They are not an employee of the town, but they are an agent of the town, working on our behalf.
Thank you. Larry?
I'm glad you made the announcement, Mr. Wayne. I did ask a couple of my neighbors, comment that they were surprised, didn't quite understand. They let them in, but it surprised them, so.
It comes to a point, if you file an abatement, for instance, we've been talking about it for the last couple of weeks, then you do have to allow someone to take a look. Because if you're filing to say that my value is different, then you need to allow someone from the town to go in and take a look at that property. If you do not allow them to come in, you would not have standing on the abatement process. So, but for anyone, if you don't want them to come into your house, you don't need to let them come into your house. But the police department is aware when they're out in the neighborhoods.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Anybody else for weekly briefing? Anybody for public comments and announcements? Yes? Yeah, do you want to go up first, and then you can just follow her up? If you'll just state your name.
My name is Pat Burchi, resident of Brewster, but I'm here for the Alzheimer's Family Support Center, and we have something on the agenda further down the Dave Burtwell Memorial Walk, May 11th, and we asked for permission to have that at Brooks Park. You're probably familiar with Barbara Ann Foley, used to run the walk, and she's given it over to us, and raises funds for us. Am I allowed to put in an advertisement for the Alzheimer's Family Support Center?
Sure.
Just say what we do. So, we're a support center across the Cape, and we offer services to families of people who have anybody with Alzheimer's or any kind of dementia. And we have something coming up at the COA in Harwich, which is called a Savvy Caregiver Program, and it's a six-week program for any family member who's taking care of a person with dementia. It's free, it's training, it's support, it's understanding the disease, it's understanding how to help the person. And the person who goes as a caregiver can bring their person who is, has a cognitive impairment, and they'll have a group that meets together while the caregiver's in the training. So it's a respite for the caregiver. Can I give out flyers about it?
Sure.
Okay.
You want to leave them at the back table, and people can take them as they leave? And why don't you just give the date that that course starts?
Oh, yes, it starts March 7th.
Thank you.
No, wait, that's wrong. March 7th is Brewster. It's going to be sometime in April or May, we're just talking to Emily Mitchell now to schedule it.
Okay.
But the COA have it on their calendar.
Okay.
And I just want people to know about the center, because if you have anyone in your family with Alzheimer's or dementia, please call us for help. It's a great organization, and everything's free.
And Pat, I have gotten...
You've been avoiding me.
I've been trying to chase down the folks with the Cranberry Festival, and we will be there to help on the day of the walk.
Well, okay, Al Ryan's going to talk to you anyway.
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi, could you just state your name?
Sure, I just wanted to be last, so if anyone wants to speak, please go before me.
Is there anybody else for public comments and announcements?
We have the wastewater.
Oh, right. You might, well, you might as well go, because they're scheduled, so.
Sure. Okay. I'm going to get my coffee before someone trips on it. I thought it might fit in here, but nope. Okay. My name's Carol Anderson. I do go by my middle name as well, but I want to kind of be as anonymous or low-key as I can, but I have a twofold issue, I think, that affects community services, certainly affects the selectmen. And I was blessed to have Captain, or Chief Gilamet, from the Police Department here in Harwich, run things by him. And he is a very compassionate man, I have to say. I'm a person that doesn't have any problems, but I notice I sort of walk into can of worms on occasion. I guess I'm too tall. And I wanted to be as serious as I could tonight, which is hard with this microphone, but the twofold problem that I've encountered here in Harwich, that's come to my attention, and I just had to speak up, is twofold. It's the fact that I used to come to the Cape, as many of us who are almost 60 or in our 60s generation, we went to CVS to buy sunblock, you know, when we were growing up. Pharmaceutical companies have become big business, nursing, you know, the medical field has been booming, especially as people live full-time on the Cape. And as we age, I understand the population here in Harwich is over 50% people over 60. Well, I'm sure other people around the country have been in my shoes. I came from Montana, because my parents developed, one of them developed a terminally ill condition. That in itself doesn't really raise any red flags, but I've worked 27 years, on a lower level, but in the medical field. And, I don't know, I just felt I had to get here as quick as I could. So I drove very safely across the country in November, and I've been here two months. And residents in Harwich, like I say, if you are 60 and over, listen up. The VNA has two branches that I'm aware of, I'm so sorry. The VNA does hospice care, and they also do, I'll call it, well-care, you know, getting well, people getting well, in the process of making people live to the fullest ability, recover if possible, best-case scenario. So, when I first got here, I found out, number one, something's wrong. The healthcare wishes of one of my parents is not being honored. And I was told directly, right off the bat, you can't change that. So I can't go from VNA hospice to VNA well-care, you know, true nursing, in my opinion. Nope. And then I pushed the issue. Well, you have to go through the doctor, and you have to bring your parent. Well, I asked what medications, because the other parent might have a hard time understanding what they're giving. When I ran this through the Drug Interaction Check at Walgreens over in Dennisport, formerly Rite Aid, it came up with findings, Level 1 severe drug interactions. So I thought, hmm, maybe that's a fluke, I'll go over to CVS. Major. Of course, when you're the squeaky wheel, and you bring these things up, all of a sudden there's all these other people, social worker coming more than once a month, et cetera, and so on, elder services, I'm sure they can help. But when I went over today to just sit in the lobby and write out a report after I thought I had an appointment, which was canceled earlier today, I was faced with this by one of the workers in the lobby, in their little tiny lobby with two little chairs. So I just said, "Well, I hope some, I hope some humanity gets through this office, as well as protocol, have a good day." But I couldn't even sit there and write out some of my concerns. Like I say, the chief knows of them. So, my other issue, which will become more prevalent as the population ages, all of us, and we have aging parents who go into, let's say, hospice care. When there's another family member, in my case, one of my siblings, wanted me out of the house. So, does not honor my father's wishes, does not like what I'm doing, does not like my parent getting better, and I'm on the street as of tonight. So, as we know, from the newspaper in the Cape Cod Times today, there's residents frozen out of their homes because of locks. My solution is pour a cup of coffee on your lock, might make a mess, hot water's even better. Works, it works the best. But you know what? I think it's a shame that we do not have a homeless shelter anywhere except Harwich. And for us women, Ms. Kavanaugh, there's three beds, you, me, and one other lucky woman.
I'm just going to interrupt you for one moment, just because we have a heavy agenda tonight.
Sure.
And we don't have anything like this...
I'll wrap it up.
...that we're discussing, yeah. So if you would just wrap it up, any kind of issue, we appreciate you bringing it.
Sure.
But ultimately, we need to move along to...
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So it's uncomfortable to think about, I know Ms. Kavanaugh interrupted me, because it is uncomfortable, but women, men, we need, from here to Provincetown, there is only one shelter, it's in Hyannis, and three beds for the whole of the Cape. So I want you to know, I talked to H-E-C-H, the Ecumenical Council, they're still collecting donations from the community and elsewhere. They're not giving that money out, they have disbanded, is what I was told today. So, good luck, God bless, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comments and announcements? Go ahead. Yep.
My name's Brian Perty. Just a quick question. There's a report later on in the meeting on the Pet Burial Ground, there's a number of us here that have questions about that. Will we be able to ask questions during or after that report, or should we put those up front now?
We'll allow some limited questions. I mean, this is a presentation, it's not a public hearing, so, I mean, you know, certainly, if, we'll keep the...
So then, so then I'll follow up to that, what would be the form we would have to get our information out based on that report?
So, if you want, go ahead.
As I say, Madam Chair, the Pet Burial Ground is under old business, so it is something that would be subject to discussion and whatever the board wants to go in terms of direction.
Right. So you'll have to...
Okay.
You'll have an opportunity.
Okay.
You'll have an opportunity to speak. Don?
I just want to back up a second and assure everybody, HESH is not out of business. HESH is holding its next board meeting next week, and I'll be there.
Thank you. Good evening, Peter.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Peter Hughes, member of the Wastewater Support Committee, and the committee has asked me to provide you an update this evening. In the interest of time, I would suggest that I just run through these items, or items that are important to us, and to you. And if you want to circle back and have any discussion, whatever, but if you wouldn't, just indulge me and let me get through the list, if you will. One of our most important objectives or missions of the Wastewater Support Committee is communication, communication with those folks, particularly in Phase 2, East Hurricaner, which will be sewage-first. And to that end, we have been looking at ways to communicate with those folks effectively. So we're looking at piggybacking on what the Water Department has for reverse 911 or robo-calls, asking people if they want to opt-in or opt-out of that system, looking at trying to collect email addresses, telephones, that type of thing, whether they want to be communicated with, as far as text or email, that type of thing. So we'll be reaching out to every one of those property owners to find out the best way they want to communicate with us, or have us communicate with them. And think about it, as we get into the construction phase, we'll be able to say, okay, next Tuesday, Street X will start to have some excavation, et cetera, et cetera. So we'll be able to actively engage the public and let them know when the construction is coming their way, when it might be finished, and that type of thing. Back in, back in December, I think you, this board, your board voted a wastewater project management lease description, if you will, a scope of work. We would encourage you to get that moving, just because we think that's a vital function. We don't know when that RFP is going to be released, but we would look, we look forward to having it happen as soon as possible. As part of that process, in what you voted, is something called the Wastewater Information Center, which would be a place where the project manager could work out of. Hopefully, it's locally, hopefully it's someplace very accessible to the public. If you remember, we called for two summer students to be part of that team, if you will. They need a place to work out of as well. We do need public access, and that's where, you know, all of the, what I would just call wastewater library material, should in fact reside. So I think if you haven't, you need to take some deliberations as to what those options might be, and make sure there is a home for the project management team, if you will. Many folks ask us about the status of the Phase 2 design and subsequent construction contracts. We don't have information yet, you probably don't either, as to when the design will actually be done, when the bid packages will go out, and when the expected bids would be returned for evaluation, et cetera, et cetera. So the public, especially those in Phase 2, would like to know those types of things or ask those questions all the time. The number-one question we're asked typically, whether it's, you know, at our meetings, or whether it's, you know, walking down the street and bumping into somebody, is, hey, is there going to be some mechanism, financial mechanism, by which we can get some relief if we have to hook up to the sewer system? If you remember, hooking up to the sewer is going to be $5,000, $10,000, $10,000, whatever, depending on your particular circumstances. We have had Comby Forest, the county loan administrator, and the Septic System, we've had Chris Comby Forest and talked to potentially about having a loan program, basically the towns that would be administered potentially by the county, it would be lower cost. In any of these, if we decide to go down those paths, the real question comes up, who's eligible for this? You know, do we go by who's eligible for, for, for instance, say, you know, some waiver on their taxes and that type of thing, that same eligibility or not? But that's something our committee can't wrestle with, but I think you're going to have to take it at some point in time. One of our jobs is to dig as deep as we can into the CWMP, Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan. I think everybody knows it's a, you know, it's a phone book, New York City Phone Book Plus. And also the related documents that came from Cape Cod Commission and Department of Energy Resources from the state, as to what the acceptance of that document was. And we just want to point out, there are places there to talk about the need for a Cape Cod Commission Certificate of Compliance for Phase 2. We read it as saying, before you start Phase 2, you need that certificate? I don't know of any certificate, we don't know of any certificate, we don't know how you get that. It's something we've got to look at, okay? Does the Cape Cod Commission need to review and approve the pump station designs for Phase 2? It says clearly in their document, when they approved the CWMP, that everything that was a lift station or anything above the ground, they wanted, they wanted to touch, they wanted to review. To my knowledge, they're not looking at that at this point in time, although they're very simple and basic structures, but we wouldn't want to have something where we can get stopped in this process because we didn't do something, we didn't check a box. There is a requirement to have a technical review committee with representatives from Harwich, Chatham, Cape Cod Commission, and Mass DEP. We don't think that, that committee hasn't formed yet. Something that, if you asked us for our committee to give you a charge, we would probably do that, we'd be happy to do that. But I think the point is that I would ask your committee, your board, to reach out to both Cape Cod Commission and Mass DEP and identify who those bodies are, that either we or you can start dealing with, so we can make this happen. Okay? It says that the technical review committee should meet at least quarterly, doesn't exist, so obviously it's not meeting. There are certain reporting requirements that have to go to that committee as we proceed along the way. So we just want to make sure we're not missing something. And we could also be misinterpreting what we read in the documents. But we don't want to wake up one day and reading the newspaper, that, by the way, Phase 2 construction is, I'm making this up, delayed for a year because we didn't check this box or do this or do that. So we encourage you to pay attention to those. It also requires an adaptive management plan, as you all remember, this plan that we put together is a 35- or 40-year program that from day one has been changing. You know, when we originally put that plan together, there were no discussions being had with Dennis and Yarmuth about potentially having a, you know, a common treatment facility. And we looked at what was in the plan originally, is to make our facility, the main facility, at the landfill site, if you will. Well, hopefully we're moving on from that. But the, the adaptive management plan is meant to take the CWMP and let it live over time, okay? Let it adjust and live over time. But there are certain requirements to that as well, and one of the questions is, who owns that document? Who's going to set that up? Who's going to take the responsibility for that? Again, it's one of those things that I, you know, I think your board needs to take up and evaluate. And that's all we have, we're meeting, we meet, you know, very active group, we meet at least twice a month. Our next meeting, by the way, is 6 o'clock on Thursday in this room, for anybody who's interested, and all of our meetings are televised, as you know. So, you know, public is welcome to attend and have input. We thank, you know, Larry's been very active with our group, Chris has been very active. I will say again, and I always do, that the Health Director and the Water Superintendent have been more than generous with their time to us, and are doing a great service to move forward Phase 2. That's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Thank you, Peter, great report. Questions, Larry?
I don't. Well done.
No questions. Thank you, Peter.
Ed? Don?
Thank you.
Not so much a question, it's just a comment, brought up by Mr. Hughes, just brought up, speaking about delays. I believe we were talking about pursuing with Chatham to allow for a sanitarian rather than an engineer being involved with the hookup. I mean, I'm presuming, since it would need a town meeting action in Chatham, that they're under the same basic, you know, deadlines that we are, and that would have to be done soon.
Yeah, that could be. We've taken action on our side through the Board of Health, they voted to move that forward, and now, you're right, it's back in Chatham's hands.
Has Chatham been actually formally contacted?
Yeah, Chatham has been formally contacted, I don't believe we've received a response, but I do not believe, the only thing that we've asked them is, is it within the scope of the IMA and their regulations, what we're requesting? So only if they were going to change their regulations to match up to that. But they can come back and say it's within the scope and the spirit of the agreement and their regulations for us to do that. So I will follow up on what the response has been, because that's been sent out probably over a month ago now.
A couple weeks ago. I'm just saying that if there is anything that's time-sensitive, now would be the time to make sure that we're...
So Chris will follow up and get us an answer on that. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Good evening.
Tom Birch, Harwich resident. This doesn't have anything to do with our town government, anything, but our federal government is out of, out of business. There are many men, women, and children that are suffering, especially the United States Coast Guard. And the Harwich Fire Department and the Monks Police Department are having a little card thing, $20 cards, kind of hypocritical, that the Coast Guard can work for free and not take anything greater than $20 gift card. But I think as a town, and town, these people protect our waters, our shores, aid the police and fire, and we should definitely make the town aware of it, and everyone else should, if possible, buy one card.
Thank you very much, very important information and notification. It's true, we have struggling families, and unfortunately, the current environment in Washington doesn't look like it's changing anytime soon, and we certainly owe those families our support. Thank you. Anybody else for public comment or announcements? Okay, can we go on to the consent agenda? Ed? And we're going to pull E from...
Madam Chair, I'd like to present the consent agenda and move the adoption of the items there on, including accept the resignation of Patricia Stackhouse, who's a member of the Harwich Center Initiative. Approve the request to hold the annual free summer concert series at Brooks Park in July 2019, sponsored by the Arts Foundation of Cape Cod. Appoint Mary Maslowsky as planning board's representative of the Community Preservation Committee for the Requesting Planning Board. Approve the application for the annual Dave Burtwell Memorial Remembering Walk Run at Brooks Park on Saturday, May 11, 2019, and waiver fees associated with the permits for the event. And approve the use of the Caleb Chase Fund in the amount of $431.91 to the Oil Express and $268.09 to EverSource.
Thank you.
Check it.
Seconded.
I'm hoping that I don't have to make an amendment, that that motion actually included with a term to expire 6/30/19 in it, because we've been doing them as one-year appointments for all of the ex-officios on the CPC.
Which one?
So item C, Mary Maslowsky, would be 6/30 of 19.
Yeah.
Was that, was that your motion?
Did you hear me say that?
Yeah. If that's your motion, that's great.
That would be my motion.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Bye. And now, E.
E?
What are you going to do?
Yeah, and just so everybody knows why, it's more of a forum thing. If something that's important, like confirming an appointment, or under our jurisdiction, I don't think it should be in the consent agenda, so don't read into it that I'm against it. So I would like to move that we appoint Robert Seedlotton Jr. as the interim Assistant Town Administrator.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, new business, request for proposals for the Sacquetucket Marina Snack Shack discussion.
So, thank you, I'm going to have John Rendone come up, and just to give him a little bit, as folks are probably aware, particularly at home, more so than this board, that included in the Sacquetucket development on the land side was the structure otherwise known as a snack shack. And the idea behind the construction of the snack shack was to eventually lease that out. Town meeting did authorize up to a 10-year lease. And prior to having a RFP go out on the street, this is a good opportunity to advertise that we're doing that, so any restaurateurs that are interested in pursuing this, now would be the time. And we wanted to make sure that the Board of Selectmen had a chance to go over the RFP, and if there was any changes that needed to be made, you know, that would be appropriate and get that out to catch the, the summer season for the upcoming 2019 season. John did a tremendous amount of work, and I appreciate all of his efforts in terms of doing this, in coordination with Bob Lawton and representatives from KP Law, too, also had some input. But just wanted to make sure that the board was aware of that effort.
Thank you.
And if you want to have the details or summary of it, and perhaps I'll defer to John to go through that.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, John Rendone, Harbor Master. So, I'm not a restaurant guy, but I tried to do a little research in how some of the similar units have been advertised, and RFPs and leases, two in particular in Orleans, what used to be Liam's. I looked at how they structured their RFP and their lease. They also have a concession stand over at Skaket Beach, so I looked at, you know, how that was structured, talked to some folks who are in the business, you know, essentially what the rule of thumb is on rental, you know, how restaurants go and pay a certain percentage for renting a space. Did some online research, and there's different ways of doing it, you know, some do price per square foot, some do percentage of gross revenue, rule of thumb is anywhere between 6% to 10% of gross revenue. So, the way I've set up the RFP really falls into that, in the direction of percent of gross revenue. And, you know, it's, it's a little difficult to be able to, you know, pinpoint exactly, because this is brand-new facility, but I think we have a very prime location. I think we have a captive audience already there at the harbor. So I think there's a lot of benefits to what, somebody who comes in and leases that, that operation, I think there's a tremendous, some tremendous value there. So, the way we set up the lease is looking at grading three different categories, essentially. One is price, and we'll put together an evaluation team once we receive the proposals back, and they'll be grading, we'll be grading three different areas. One is price, and we have a highly advantageous, advantageous, and non-advantageous three category that looks at percentage of gross revenue. I think the highest is at 15%. I think the highest is at 15 percent, middle one is 10 percent, and the low is 8 percent of gross revenue. And then the other one looks at experience of the lesee, and then the other looks at the quality of staff that will be running the operation. And we'll grade those once we get the proposals back. We'll put together a three-person evaluation team and make that grading effort. We have talked to KP Law, really specifically on the lease part of this, came from KP Law, so I think it's, I think it's in alignment. If there's any specifics about what I have in the RFP, I'd be glad to try to answer them. But, you know, we kind of look at, how much can this snack shack make? And me and Chris and Bob Cafarelli, before he retired, and I had some discussions with Bob Lawton, we, you know, we looked at it, and so, we made some judgments there. But I think it's, I think it, obviously, we want whoever comes in to succeed, but we also want to make sure that we're getting paid a fair price for the property.
Thank you, John.
Sure.
Any questions from the board? Larry?
Thank you, John. Certainly put a lot of work into it. Let me ask you a, you went for a five-year lease with renewal for the next five years. Since it's a new venture, why five, say, over three years?
Well, you know, I think five, whoever's coming in is going to make a significant investment. They're going to have to bring in the stoves, the fryers, the reefers. I mean, you know, whoever comes in is going to be making an investment, and I think doing a two- or three-year lease upfront probably isn't fair to them. I think five is a good balance, and we'll reevaluate it after the five. I mean, that was kind of my thought. I don't know if you have anything, Chris?
Yeah, I think just to, I mean, we have two things here, that we have our own golf course, and the experience that we had with that, and kind of some of the challenges that that rendered. That was an operating kitchen before it was leased out. This is really the shell of a building. And I do think that, John, if someone's going to make a hundred, or a hundred and fifty, or $200,000 investment, we need to give them some time, and we should try to recoup that. So, I think the 10 years is probably something that does make sense with the five and five. So, if we have a vendor that's not, you know, very good, we can terminate that after five.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Yes, sir.
Michael?
I have nothing. Great job, John.
Thank you.
No, but it's fine in looking at the minimum, minimum menu. It tends to be directed toward a higher-priced snack shack menu than something of a modest of, I mean, it would be nice to have a few more modest items provided for.
We certainly can look at that, you know, I think we're going to get a variety of menus that's part of their submission, is an example menu. I do think, being the location and what we have there on the water, we should be focusing it kind of towards seafood, but...
No problem with that, but, you know, a grilled cheese sandwich for the toddlers is something that's affordable for families and something the kids like. I'm not so sure they're into lobster, well, they probably are into lobster roll, but it winds up all over the dock.
We can add some of that. Yes, sir.
They do have grilled cheese on here.
Yeah, we have hot dogs and hamburgers.
Grilled cheese and hot dogs.
I think there's some more traditional fare.
Don?
Yeah, I actually do have a problem with that area of this. This is unbelievably complex. I mean, you've got a 500-foot, give or take, snack shack?
Mm-hmm.
Square foot? And, I mean, just so the public understands what we got here, because it says it must include at least the following: lobster roll, clam chowder, onion rings, french fries, fresh fish, fresh whole clams, fresh whole clam strips, fresh scallops, so apparently frozen wouldn't be okay, chicken fingers, hot dogs, quarter-pound hamburger, quarter-pound cheeseburger, chicken, grilled cheese, bacon, sausage, eggs, three types of bag, three types of rolls and sandwiches and bagels, and a vegetarian salad. I don't know of any place that's three times as large as this that would have this kind of a menu, because you couldn't maintain freshness without throwing away half of everything.
Okay. Like I said, I'm not a restaurant guy. So, all I could say is, I think there's going to be interested people who come in, and they're going to give us their menu, and we'll have to evaluate that menu.
But it wouldn't be responsive to this if it's less than this.
I think we could probably add fresh or frozen.
I think we'd have some latitude in the evaluation, but...
Ed?
Well...
We could scale it down.
To the variety, you know, there is, through the Cranberry Festival, one of the vendors we bring over, who has a 10-by-40-foot trailer, who the Dennis Public Market vendor provides this menu in a mobile unit.
Sure.
Couldn't you simply, couldn't you fix this just by saying suggested menu, rather than make it absolute?
I think we want to have, kind of establish a floor, because if we say, then if someone puts one item on there, you know, I think that having a floor, but I think having some, maybe, or equivalents, you know, so if somebody wants fresh or frozen, that may give us a little bit more latitude to the point.
I'm just worried, Madam Chair, that, I did have a food service license. I have a store, and I know the complexity that you're asking for here as a minimum would, A, probably off-put a number of potential bidders who just don't want to do this, and B, put us in a position where they're not responsive if they don't do at least this. I mean, what's left after this? Filet mignon? I mean, because it's, it's just a really extensive list of things.
Ed?
You know, we occasionally disagree on the, I also had a food service license around a cafe and pub, and the entire kitchen area was, if it was 500 square feet, and we had an equally complex menu, actually probably more so, with a number of different breakfast, lunch, and dinner items that we had. So, you know, it's...
I'm just saying we couldn't consider anybody bidding with less than this.
Yeah.
Well, so we can make a couple of changes to fresh or frozen.
I mean, the other thing that we could do is have kind of minimum and then desired, or do something like that, too, just to give us a little bit more flexibility to the point.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think you really have to go back. First of all, John did a great job putting this together, but as for someone who has responded to RFPs, I have to kind of agree with Selectman Howell. When you put in this RFP that you are specifically looking and you list the items that you want, I would argue that if someone was to apply and leave one of those items out, they did not meet the criteria of the RFP. And with all due respect to John's thing, while we'd evaluate it that way, no, there is no evaluating. If it's not there, they did not meet it. My suggestion would be to list the food that you're looking for as a suggestion, and maybe somehow you can allude to what you will look at as a highly advantageous menu, advantageous, not advantageous menu, think, something like that. That allows the respondent really to say, we're going to do everything except for the double cheeseburgers or something. But if you list double cheeseburgers in there, and they don't have that in their response, they are automatically disqualified, because they have not met the criteria under 30B. So, number one. Number two, going back to the cost evaluation, if I may, to just limit it to someone responding by strictly saying they're going to give you a percentage of their take, I also do not believe I would do that. I think I would say that you would accept the, in the price proposal, you would accept proposals that are based on a percentage of the net sales, but you would also accept and look at and evaluate a flat fee. This is a peculiar situation. Well, looking for someone to put in a great deal of money when they come in there, they may want to come in forward, and I'm going to use dollars as an example, one dollar, but you can extrapolate it to whatever you think. For the first six months, we're going to pay you a dollar a month. For the second six months, we're going to pay you two dollars a month. For the third six months, we're going to pay you five dollars a month. They can incrementally go up as they're starting to build their business, because they did have to put in a lot of their own personal money. That just may be how someone may want to apply for it. And if you don't leave that open in an RFP, that they can respond with a fixed-cost payment, then quite frankly, again, they don't meet the valuation, you can't evaluate them. So, someone may offer you $15,000 a month for it, but because you specifically said in the RFP, you want a percentage, that does not get a chance to be evaluated. So, I would just leave the RFP as open as possible for, so you can evaluate properly.
Madam Chair, I definitely appreciate the comments, and I like the idea of the highly advantageous. We could certainly do that as a rating criteria. We do have the or function, so it is a percentage or a dollar amount, so that element is in there.
Ed?
And as Leo's comment on the menu, having it as the suggested menu, and then have one, an additional criteria, you know, you're highly advantageous if you propose the menu, the suggested menu. You are less advantageous if you're only providing half the items, and, you know, et cetera.
So, some minor revisions and such, and good comments, and did you want to, Don, did you have another question?
Yeah, this is a flat-out question. How are we collecting for this? I say this only because I try to learn from other people's mistakes, and Orleans wound up with one of its food trucks, which flat-out didn't pay them. So, are we collecting every month? Are we collecting at the end of the season? It doesn't seem to...
Yeah, I mean, if we're evaluating based upon percent of gross revenue, we'd be collecting at the end of the season.
So, there'd be no progress payments?
Well, the RFP also includes that a financial report goes in by the end of December, so that you see, and so what they're taking in and what they're presenting. Prior to, with that discussion now changing with the idea that you would maybe revamp the way you're...
What I'm saying is that Orleans got to the end of a year, where one out of the five food trucks didn't pay them at the end of the year, so that they wound up allowing it to occur for a whole year, and they got nothing.
No, I understand what you're saying. What I'm saying is the discussion here tonight has now said, maybe we won't do it that way. We will ultimately rate it on whether somebody wants to pay a lump sum upfront, whether they want to play...
I'm not talking about rating. I'm talking about how they disperse to the town during the...
I know. I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying ultimately that it is still open for discussion with revisions that we're talking about and making with the RFP.
We could make a revision to have some progress payments up to the minimum amount, and then the adjustment factor at the end.
At the end.
So, that's something, we don't have that very detailed in here, and we probably should put that in there.
Right. That's what I'm saying, is this discussion...
We can look at that progress payment element.
Okay.
So, obviously, with those changes, that we'll have that come back, but when were you planning on going out?
Well, just, you know, I would like to suggest that these are fairly minor tweaks, that if the board's okay with this, I mean, John and I can get together and just make these tweaks and get it out. I am kind of concerned that he has, I think the due date back is February 22nd, and then a month to evaluate. We're coming up pretty quick to, I know that sounds like a long way off, but we're coming up pretty quick, and people are going to have to order equipment and so forth.
Right.
So, if the board was okay with the form and function with those changes being made, I would like to see if we can get that out.
What's the consensus of the board?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's fine.
I'd still like to see it.
Okay. So, I think you can always put it in our drop box.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll make sure the board's aware, and then we will have a chance to do addendums. So, if there's something prior to February 22nd that is, you know, needs to be a change, we could do an addendum and make those changes.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, John.
Okay.
I don't think he wants to talk to us.
Before I go, if I could just, I think everybody knows I'm a Coast Guard guy. Yeah, retired Coast Guard, my son's in the Coast Guard, my son-in-law's in the Coast Guard. So, anyways, I just want to thank the police chief and the fire chief. I didn't know they were doing that. I think that's awesome, and I really appreciate Tom's comments in that regard.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Did you have...
In that regard, let me, if I may, let me just comment that the Coast Guard Auxiliary is doing the same thing. So, a lot of us know Coast Guard Auxiliary members? They're collecting $20 gift cards that they, that's legal to give to the Coast Guard. You can't go more than that. You violate some government rules, is all the government can do.
Wouldn't want to do that.
Wouldn't want to violate any government regulations. Should be pointed out, however, though, if you have a friend who's a Coast Guard member, you can provide him some money, any value, because that's not going through the Coast Guard. That's one-on-one.
Thank you, Larry.
The losing leeway.
I sort of thought having people work without being paid was, would violate something.
You would think, right? Who's going to catch anybody? No one's working. Good evening.
Thank you. Madam Chairman, I apologize. I realize now that I'm out of order, I thought on, there was a line item on the agenda for hearings. I should have probably been before you at the comment opportunity.
Oh, what did you want to speak on?
Well, may I, may I speak to you?
Madam Chair, just, because we have to keep records of all these meetings. If I could ask for a vote that the RFP was okay, a motion in a second, with those changes made to the evaluation criteria and the menu and the progress payments?
I move we approve the request for proposal as presented tonight with the adjustments that we, that was also presented.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I, just so you know, I'm not going to vote for it, because I can't presume that I can know what it is that's going to be adjusted.
Okay.
Fair enough.
So, any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay.
Opposed.
Opposed.
Opposed. I'm sorry, opposed.
Aye.
Four to one.
I seem to have a problem with this.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And so, what, what did you want to speak on? I just need to hear the subject.
Well, thank you. I should have been before you in the comments section, but, Madam Chairman, members of the board, administrator, I sat down to sketch out a letter to present to you tonight, and I thought I could present it in my head. However, by the time I finished sketching it out, it was too much more, too much for me to remember. So, if I may, I'll read it to you.
What is the topic?
Well, it's a general topic. There are several items. I'm revisiting some comments I made before the board last year in anticipation of town meeting.
We have a heavy agenda this evening, so, I mean, if you wanted to email so that we could put you on the agenda under public comments for next week, because ultimately we have multiple things to get through.
I hear that. I gather that, I got the sense of that, but, well, one, the, the letter pivots around the crematorium, and I...
Well, I'm going to stop you right there, because ultimately, we want to put you on the agenda, so the public can be aware of your comments if they're interested in attending, and they wouldn't know that this evening, because you're not on the agenda.
Well, I don't argue with you. I don't, I didn't come here to be on the agenda.
I understand that, but we have an agenda in front of us for a reason, and I'm not trying to be difficult, and you're welcome to make your public comments, but I would ask that you would just email so that we could put you on the agenda, so that others could, who may share your same concerns, are aware and can come to the meeting.
I'll do that. And may I, since I brought these comments, I'll just come back next week, but I'm going to leave you the comments for you to be...
That's fine.
Sure.
Thank you.
We'll put it on the agenda for next week.
Next week. Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. So, we are, request for use of Sick Bank Police Department, which we already...
Yeah, and this is just an acknowledgement of what was the action that was taken in executive session.
Thank you. Old Business, Barnstable County IT Assessment Update.
We have Bill Travers from the county here to do an overview. I believe he was going to be joined or in the audience. There are some folks available just to help out on this effort as well.
Good evening. Thanks for cramming me in here. It's good to be back. So, my name is Billy Travers. I'm the IT Director for the County of Barnstable, and I'm doing a kind of an update on, hopefully be the final update, of the assessment process that we've been involved in with Harwich for some months now. The assessment began with the selection of IT infrastructure and staffing responsibilities, primarily being the focus. And sometime later, I'll just get right into the executive summary that is included in the overall report there. We wound up making a series of key recommendations, and actually, first, shout out to all the support I got from Harwich staff. The two prior reports, one being a security assessment, were a really good foundation to build on, really helped kind of expedite things a bit. So, without further ado, recommendation number one for augmenting IT staff, one glaring issue we noticed was, I don't really have noticed, but the fact is, it's a IT department with a single formal staff person, represents a single point of failure. Being in that position previously, there are issues with, you know, taking accrued time and things like that that come up. When you have an operation, or an element of an operation that impacts an entire organization, it becomes extremely important to keep some continuity as far as that goes, accountability in that regard. So that was one recommendation that came out of it, and these are ordered from most important to least important, or high to low priority anyway, and there's a, you know, a bit of a, you know, so they, they kind of overlap in some cases. Going further on migrate and consolidate, this is the technical recommendation, and it represents a shift to cloud-based services preferably, in the interest of encompassing security risk, or decreasing security risks, achieving better compliance, all that stuff, lowering costs, just to name a few things. There's, let's see here, priority, prioritize cloud services, this is, this is mainly a policy recommendation, this is putting an extra checkbox in any procurement process, or any decision-making process around getting an IT service of any sort, or product, is just asking the question, is there, is there something that hasn't been done before, better, and should we use that instead? Just making sure that's done, with certain things that can be skipped at times, but it's just an important thing to wedge into the process there. Centralize IT, excuse me, did I skip one here? Yes, I did. Migrating existing infrastructure, oh, excuse me, I'm reading my own report wrong here, mitigate existing infrastructure and service risks on page thirteen. That is a corrective measure, correction is a strong word there. So one thing that is, is pretty common across the board, private sector as well, is people or organizations don't pay for annual maintenance costs for, primarily software, and wind up in being woefully out of date in certain areas, or at risk for lack of support on certain things, or security risks through lack of patching, because they're not paying annual maintenance on this stuff. So this is really just kind of address, or bringing that to the spotlight, and giving a cost of what it would be to correct that, so then it can be compared properly to a cloud alternative in those cases. That is, like I said, it's relatively a common thing, and it's primarily done for cost saving, so it's usually a decision from above, saying like, oh, well, we don't need it right now, so we're not gonna get it, and, but then it never gets corrected at any point, and, you know, things can happen as a result. Next up, another policy-related thing, centralized IT governance, where applicable. This is related to oversight of initially IT procurement, so there's visibility into what is purchased from above, what is, what is the true cost of all IT expenditures organization-wide, regardless of where they're coming out of. One thing that's, no, name, 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 Carol, Carol Copla was very helpful in getting, helping me get to the bottom of, was digging into expenditures and figuring out exactly what vendors were driving costs across all departments, as opposed to just looking at tidy budget line items and things. So that, that was extremely helpful, but integrating that into the initial process of procuring items, can, kind of, you don't need to do that legwork retroactively to figure things out, it's just there. It also helps gauge, in the report, I did a number of metrics on spending and staff count and all that, and it helps get a clearer picture on that regard, too. The last, no, not the last, number six, maximize existing investments, this, there's a number of things, primarily Munis was the biggest thing that came to mind, and Carol was a big help on that, too, there's a lot of modules that were purchased, and actually paying for annual support on, that aren't implemented. So there's a few things where we can look at options to use the stuff that we already have, and that's, that's the end of the sentence. Now determine interdepartmental IT roles, and this is, this is something that's actually really cool that was going on, so Scott Tillsley, working a percentage of time in IT, basically, well, not in IT, but for the cause, I guess you could say, and it's, it's a really good example of interdepartmental collaboration, and, but it wasn't really formal, so it's kind of talking to Scott, if they, give me a rough percentage of time, things like that, but it wasn't anything, an actual formal thing, so as far as, if you get in, into the weeds with like IT policy and something goes sideways, you don't have any actual accountability addressed there in a formal capacity, or if someone is looking for someone who's responsible for something, and Foster is not here, it's not necessarily clear that there's that arrangement. So this is more of a, just general housekeeping policy sort of thing. And I tried to get through these as fast as possible, I'm sure I skipped a bunch of things, and it was a little sloppy, but feel free to ask any questions, or happy to address anything you might have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Don?
The only thought that I have, because we've been talking about the IT problem as if it were, well, actually, I believe it's covering a number of other, a number of areas, it, you're not really explicit about this, but in terms of the IT position, that wouldn't be somebody who would necessarily be involved with making judgments about records retention under state law, right?
Not quite that level, that would be closer to the department director's level, or preferably upstream from that, so...
We currently don't have anyone responsible as a point person for the content of things that are on the site, with regard to how long they have to be retained under state records retention requirements.
I see, so the, the action of actually implementing that is, can be an IT action, but the, the law is outside of that, so the requirement drives what actions are taken, whether it's automated or not, so, for instance, I've never been given a solid answer as far as how long should we keep things, so we keep things forever.
We do have, when they changed the public records law, Madam Chair, there was a requirement, the name of it's escaping me, but we have to have basically a public records officer, who is the town clerk, and I know she works in close coordination with Carolyn to make sure that we do have the records retention, and what can we keep, and what we need to, you know, destroy in a tonic fashion, but I think to the point, you know, how do we integrate that into the computer network, that has not been integrated in yet, and that was something that I think would be an opportunity, if we had additional capacity to try to get to.
Well, what I'm driving at is, there's a boxes and wires guy, software responsibilities, but there's also, the data that we have on our site presumably could give us some sort of productivity, but we're not even getting accurate information right now. Oftentimes, the site doesn't reflect the paper backup that you would have to come in to review, and I don't think any of this deals with that.
I think what you're driving at is, that's, that's more of a systems integration type issue, where you're automating requirements outside, non-technical requirements, I guess would be the right way to frame it, so you're automating non-technical requirements onto data that's housed on the technology, and you're right, that the, as far as the job responsibility goes, that doesn't get that specific, but the, the need is there, and it's actually addressed through much of the, the item two, the cost estimate there is based on levels of Microsoft licensing that allow for things where certain bits of information are redacted, like social security numbers automatically in email, things get flagged at certain points, and data is actually tagged and taxonomized automatically. A lot of the decisions as to what to do with what has to come from above, but that gives the, it puts the tools in the IT department's lap, as far as, you know, what levers to pull to make things happen. But the, the overarching need for, for integration, for streamlining things, is also addressed through more technology as well, so there's many ways to automate anything with anything these days, and, and Microsoft's licensing tiers actually all include some level of that. I won't get, I'm trying desperately not to get too far into the details of products and whatnot, but happy to if you want.
Cutting to the chase, all I was saying is that what you've got here is, is the barest minimum, because the IT department, even if we took this recommendation, would be two individuals, that what you've got here is the minimum of what we need, but there's other stuff that we, that we need that's outside of what you've got.
Yes, yes, thank you, sorry, took me so long to get there, low blood sugar, I don't know.
Thank you. Ed, have any questions? Michael?
I have no questions, great report.
Larry?
Yeah, I really liked your report, well done, and I appreciate that Scott and Foster and everyone helped you out. I guess my question then is, probably directed more at Chris, is how we put, we need to develop some action steps and priorities to put this in place.
Yeah.
To move forward in some of these recommendations, so what's your, what's your thought on that?
Yeah, no, I'm with you, I think two things, one that you will see on the budget, the budget is tight, I gotta tell you, it's gonna be difficult to, to get any additional people in, but we will look at that very carefully and see what options are available to us, and then we will have a follow-up meeting, we do have two parts to the contract with the county, one part is to get the report done, and basically accept it, just acknowledge that the selectmen have the report, and then we're gonna go through and see, there's a second component where we have two hundred hours, I believe, of IT support that the town has purchased as well with the county, and we're gonna see if there's certain things of this element that we can start to implement now, in advance of doing something for July one.
Because, that was gonna be a couple of my questions on that, one is, in hiring IT staff, is that a necessity in your opinion, or some of that we could contract out, some of the services, and do it efficiently?
It's, it's at a pretty low level to, to contract out efficiently, and it's actually been done to some extent, so Alex, can't remember the last name, local consultant, was also invaluable in me gleaning information from various things, and, but that's, that's kind of a luck thing, so he's, he's been in the area and wanted help, and has been consistently the same contractor for many, many, many years, I don't know, it's like a decade or something like that, but, so that's not the norm, though, so usually if you contract something out, you get, unless you're contracting out at a very high scale money-wise, you're getting whatever, whoever happens to be available, and you don't necessarily get consistency and support that way, so it's, it's in a weird spot, I think it's a necessity as far as...
Okay, I got that, then.
Okay.
My, my second question is, one of my concerns in our, in our IT functions have been not always communicated across departments, so we don't buy similar software, we go on different ways, and maybe possibly different hardware, you address that in your report, by the way. My question is, do you have that same type of database from other towns and counties across the Cape that would help us further be sure we're in line with what our neighbors are doing, and maybe get better deals, and have some assurance that we're making right moves?
Yes, yes, and not complete, obviously, but yeah, the more people we work with and talk to, and some of which very intimately, we've been doing per diem support with Truro for, for years now, we've been doing just about all of IT for woefully...
And you keep that sort of database that we can hire about and try to...
Yeah, it's, it's not necessarily an intentional database, so we track all of our service requests and everything, projects with tickets, and we have everything tagged, and we can tell what's going on, what, what problems are happening with what products, what products are in use, you know, so inventory, that sort of thing.
That'd be a good information base for us to, to look at. Thank you.
Cool, thank you.
I had one question, in terms of the cloud-based services and that we should migrate over, now is that something the county can help us with, or is that something, again, we would need an outside resource?
Yeah, so, so this, this, I wrote this report to be very unbiased, and so that you could pick it up and bring it anywhere in the world, and, but, but the subtext of all of this is that we could help with, with any aspect of it, to varying degrees, and even with cases where if we have, we don't have the time available to do something, we'll line someone up with a contractor, and kind of funnel it, or set them up one-on-one for a specific project, but yeah, that's definitely something that we're heavily involved in and invested with at the moment.
Okay, great, thank you, and thank you for your report, it was excellent.
No problems, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, the animal control update?
We got Scott.
Oh, hi Scott, I'm sorry.
Would you mind if I just follow that up real quick?
No, please do, I can see.
Quick introduction, Scott Tillsley, Lieutenant with the Fire Department, Bill referenced some of the work that I do with Foster. Just wanted to take a moment and reflect on that, the effort, I wanted to thank the board for commissioning the study, I think it accomplished a number of things. First of all, it showed a commitment by the board in supporting information technology in the town, some of the, we've talked at length about some of the opportunities, and I think that Bill hit on a number of those in his report, and, and there are many that he didn't, didn't hit on, Mr. Halby, you know, referenced the retention of some of our documents, there's probably, there's plenty of things that we're not doing that we could be doing. Another thing it did, it opened up channels with the county IT department, whereby we have access to them, to some of their technical abilities, to help support, they've got some abilities that are probably well beyond what we have, and well beyond what we want to keep in town, certainly at a network architecture level. One of the questions we ask time and again is, what are the other towns doing, I just alluded to it, Mr. Valentine, right, a county department has that ability to sort of reach information from across the Cape, and find out what some of our brothers and sister towns are doing, I think that's invaluable. It outlined some of the opportunities that we have in areas for efficiencies and harnessing new technology, I believe it was a hundred percent in line with some of the material that we talked about last year that Foster and I brought up, and I was really happy with some of those things, and even almost verbatim to the job descriptions that we thought might be additional here, so I think that was great. For me, the takeaway is that the county is a great resource to help build a roadmap, to engage in some of those larger projects that we want to get done here. The county probably cannot replace the boots on the ground, you know, the Foster, and he needs some help, you've got, you need people here that are supporting on a day-to-day basis, and, you know, intervening between the, the department heads, that to know exactly what they need, to work with contractors, to work with the county, to work with specialists, to, to bring this all together, but you need to augment Foster's staff. I think that the Chief Clark and Chief Gilmet would both say that Detective Harrison and myself probably need to dial it back a little bit, we need to focus a little bit more on the Fire Department and the Police Department than on some of the IT stuff we're doing right now, and we, we need Foster to get a little bit of help in order to do that. And I can't echo enough, Bill mentioning that Foster's a single point of failure here, and I don't mean failure, but if something happens to Foster, we're in trouble, that's a, it's a, it's a real risk factor, so, again, thank you for, for supporting it, please support in the future, look for the, maybe some increases in the IT budget, and thank you.
And thank you, Scott, for all the work you've put in as well, we appreciate it. Okay, animal control update, Chief Gilmet?
Yeah, I see him out in the hall, he's coming.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dave Gilmet, Chief of Police. I wanted to update the board, I wasn't at the meeting, as you know, two weeks ago, I wanted to update the board on our department's response to Judy Wilson's comments regarding the investigation of a dog bite involving her mother. We did conduct a full review of the investigation and of the overall process, and that revealed a number of unintentional mistakes, miscommunications, and oversight failures, just as Judy had stated. As the leader of the Police Department, I take full responsibility for, for these failures. But as the leader of the department, I also realize that our organization is made up of human beings, and human beings are not perfect, they are going to make mistakes. So all I ever ask of my personnel, when unintentional mistakes are made, is to admit the mistake, apologize if appropriate, learn from it, and put measures in place to prevent something similar in the future. As my memo states, you should have your memo, my memo in your packet, at this time, as of this date, I'd met with Judy, and I provided her and her mother with a written apology from the Police Department, I've reviewed the findings of our investigation with her, and I've also reviewed the measures we're going to put in place to prevent something similar from happening again. I've reviewed the findings of our investigation with her and have also reviewed the measures we're going to put in place to prevent something similar from happening again. I've provided you with a few pages from our animal control policy specifically on the dog bite investigation procedure. The new sections are under Section 9, that are D and E. Those are all new and specifically lay out what the procedure and process is from this point forward. It's my firm belief that these new guidelines will improve the overall process and prevent issues in the future. And just to wrap things up before, if you have any questions, I want to assure the board and the citizens of Harwich that this incident is not at all typical of how we do business. If anyone ever has a complaint about how we deliver police services, we are always willing to listen to the complaint, determine what happened, and take necessary action. So if you have any questions on the process or the revisions to the policy or anything related to this matter.
Thank you, Chief. We appreciate you putting together that report, the analysis, because it was concerning. Board members have any questions? Michael?
Yeah, I think you have it. Well, it should be handled by. I have one question on the process.
Sure.
You've, certainly you've tried to cover multiple step all possibilities. You didn't put a timeline in there at all. Is there, you know, like with the oversight, done within 24 hours or 40 hours, some type of timeframe?
Right. Sometimes, some policies do include that. Sometimes it can get hairy trying to hold somebody to a timeline if it's a rather complicated investigation. But I can certainly discuss that. You know, I'm still open to suggestions. This is something that, that was drafted that I thought was fairly comprehensive, but I appreciate the input.
Well, and I trust your judgment. I just raised a question.
Ed?
Did a very nice job.
Don?
Yeah, the only comment I have is actually, it's refreshing because in this day and age, you hear, most of the time you hear, if I said anything that might have offended you, then I apologize for how you feel. To actually take responsibility and say we're gonna change the policy, it should be commended.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, for your hard work. We appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Pet burial grounds update. Robin Kelly. Good evening, Robin.
Good evening. Robin Kelly, Cemetery Administrator. I did have a PowerPoint. I don't know, I'm sure everyone already saw the whole thing. I could run through it real quickly if you'd like.
Sure, that's fine.
Okay, so this is Curlview Memorial, which is in Florida, and this is what I was modeling our pet burial ground after. Why should we build a pet burial ground? And who, who'd want to use it and why should we put it in our town? So many people have asked me if they could bury their pets on their cemetery lots in the town, and it's against our rules and regulations under interment and Rule Number One. It's there for human remains only. Okay, is there a need for a pet burial ground? So I went to all the town clerks on Cape Cod, and I actually asked them for all of their registered dogs. Nobody registers any other animals, and there's 19,743 dogs that are registered on the Cape, with the exception of Wellfleet. For some reason, they don't have any numbers. And most of the people that I talked to do not register their dogs. That being said, since I've brought this forward and I've been emailing this to all the town clerks, some of the towns are now going to put out fines that are higher than the dog license costs so that people start registering their dogs, because I have brought to their attention how many dogs were not registered. So we currently have 200 people on a waiting list to purchase burial lots for their, mostly dogs. We have a couple cats and one horse on our waiting list. I've also been in talks with the K-9 officers. They have seven K-9 dogs that were, have already been cremated that they want to have interred. I did a competitive analysis of different burial grounds. And a lot of people bring their animals to the Brewster Rescue, the Animal Rescue League, and they usually bring them up to Boston. They are completely full at their Boston facility and are no longer selling burial spaces. At their space, Plymouth Rest is in Plymouth. They're 51 miles away, and Middleboro is at 57 miles away. So I researched town-owned lots and I worked with the town assessor and Paul Sweetser, who's now the town engineer, and Bob Caffarelli, which, who are both have gone now, and the Health Department. I wanted to find lots that had no wetland issues or invasive species. I want you to also know that there are 505 town-owned parcels in this town. And there are actually six others that are on Queen Anne Road. One of them's over three acres, a couple other two acres. They were all taken by eminent domain. And this was the only parcel that was taken for open space or municipal use. Okay, so this, this is when this lot was taken, in May 8 of 1997, and it was taken, as you can see, for open space or municipal purposes. So in 2006, somebody brought it to town meeting floor with a couple other parcels, and they wanted to sell these parcels, and it failed at town meeting. And then they brought it back in 2007 and tried to sell the parcels again. This parcel on the list, this parcel was deleted and removed. There was 12 original parcels on there and forward deleted, and the rest were then, were able to be sold. This is the original language of the article that I drafted with the Cemetery Commission. And this is the actual article, number 57 at town meeting in 2016, that was passed after a long debate, if anyone was there at the meeting. 104 yes and 38 no. Okay, our mission is to provide our customers with the best overall public pet burial ground experience by creating a friendly and professional atmosphere that aligns with our mission of the Harwich Pet Memorial Gardens and Walking Park. To create a place for our customers and residents and employees will want to share with their pets, friends, and families as we set the standard for municipal pet services. Okay, this is the picture, recent picture that I took. This, and I wanted to know what sections would be needed, what lot sizes, memorials, layouts, different features that would be needed in the, within the burial ground space. Okay, so I went to quite a few pet events, the Popalooza, the Harwich Country Gardens, dog events, the blessing of the dogs of my, my church. If anyone goes to Holy Trinity, they'll know Father Mark brings his dog everywhere he goes, and also pet stores. Okay, when collecting the data, I asked for customers' names, addresses, emails, and what their cremation needs would be. Are they looking for one pet, two pets? You know, what, what size lots were they looking for? Who, who would need this? And also talked to a lot of handicap accessible, the people that wanted it to have handicap accessible walkways. Okay, this is the burial ground. I took these pictures earlier this week. As you can see, the ground is already developed, and we have the, the out markings of the pathway that we're supposed to go in. Okay, so if you look at the map right here, we're proposing to do in Phase 1 just the development of about 9% of the property. So we will have a double lot section. The lot size is 24 by 18. That will take one large cremation, for an example, a horse, or two small cremations. The memorial size will be 18 by 12, and I just gave an example. This is how we laid out when we laid out the Evergreen Cemetery. Same lot markers. We're using these because they're actually better. Okay, so we got 18 rows, 18 lots in each row, I mean, and then nine rows. So each lot would be $150 for the two cremains. The 648 in this section, which would bring $97,200. Each lot opening would be $50, and that would bring in $64,800. And for this section, it would be 162. So in Section Number 2 is for single burial spaces. They're 18 by 12. The memorial's 12 by 8, each numbered lot, same thing. Wanted to note that in each one of our sections, we have five feet of green space in between each row. So there's plenty of green space. All the markers are flat and flush. So there's a, each one of these lots are $100. There's 320 in this section, so that's $32,000. Each lot opening is 50, $16,000. So this section would be 48. Okay, the brick walkways, these bricks are four inches by six. It's, there's 160.78 feet of walkway, which comes out to 487 bricks. Each brick costs $75. So the total for this section is $60,875. That we have, I've been working closely with the K-9, Cape Cod K-9 Relief Fund. They are interested in doing a K-9 memorial there. And these are two of the memorials. They have gotten down to their finalists, what they're doing. They will be raising funds to pay for this memorial. Okay, so the total area of the property we're gonna develop in Phase 1 is 900, I mean 9,173 square feet. Total area of the property is 97,858 square feet. We're developing 9.37% of the property. We'd like to develop 70% of the property, even with those green spaces that are open, and projected would be $2 million. I won the Kennedy Pickard Municipal Award for this project, and the Cemetery Department is pleased to take these steps and to allow this. We do have a lot of people waiting to purchase lots. And we've been just hopeful that this is gonna happen sooner than later.
Thank you, Robin, for your presentation.
Okay.
Questions from the board?
I'll hold my questions for now.
Larry?
No, I have no questions. Nice job.
Ed? Don?
Well, I'll start with, it's a summary statement. As you know, I am inalterably opposed to doing this. We, we all know that we're at a point where we're at now because we set aside the land, but nothing was ever appropriated and it was never a request for a capital outlay for this. And in this presentation, I don't see expenses, and I'm not even sure what the constellation of potential customers comes from, because 19,000 dogs, they don't all die in the same year. And I'm not sure if any queries were made specifically to the vets about whether or not they would be willing to get involved, but I'm not even tempted to go there because this is so not a, a critical municipal operation. That's just my thoughts.
Michael?
So just to answer Don, I think how we got here was Article 57 at last year's town meeting.
2016.
2016. So Article 57, 138 for, or 104 for, no 38. So I think the intention of town meeting was very clear. So Robin, you know, before we get into any other debate, I support this 100%. I support you, but more importantly, I support town meeting and the process that we have that got this piece of land to the Cemetery Commission for a written purpose. Sure, there was money mistakes made, but none of them in my mind were intentional, no matter what gets written on social media. You did an outstanding job. You brought the town meeting, and they voted for it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Larry?
Sort of related to this, but when you talk about the crematorium plots, you're not implying that we actually would need a crematorium here to do that? We could take
No.
the ashes from elsewhere.
Correct.
and use this burial ground.
Correct.
So we're talking about the best cemetery, cemetery right now.
Right.
Period.
Period.
Good clarification. Thank you, Larry, for making that clarification.
Well, just, just on that, it is the pet burial ground that's being up for this year for a town meeting, and there is an out years for the capital plan to have crematorium. But I know the gentleman wanted to speak, and I appreciate that, that it, right now, it's just about the burial ground and finishing something that's been started. And at a later date, at a different time, would be the discussion on the crematorium.
Okay.
Don?
To Mr. McCaskill's comments, you can't extrapolate from a town meeting article. It authorized the land to be set aside and ultimately got set aside under the jurisdiction of an organization where we came to find out that they weren't legally entitled to have jurisdiction for this. So whenever they voted, it did not, there was discussion, I was there, about the money part of this. And I think Mr. Kakounis was actually one who got up and said, don't worry, we'll have ample opportunity to discuss the, the money because there has to be a request. And the ensuing request never happened. I might point out, it's water under the bridge now, because nobody actually said anything. But if you look at the numbers, it suggests there wasn't even a quorum when this happened. This was not a ground swell. This was 104 people out of potentially 13,000 residents.
Chris, can you just, if you could, Don's comment about this not being legal? What are we, what are we talking about, jurisdiction?
Yeah, I, I think jurisdictionally, I'm gonna have a little different, different take than what he has, I think. Under my, you know, state law allows for a Cemetery Commission to take certain actions and to operate within those actions. So within the, the human remains and cremains, that certainly is well within the jurisdiction. When state law is silent, there's not a lot of pet burial grounds in, in the Commonwealth. So when you have silence, there's, then discretion is given to a town, and particularly town meeting and the actions of the town in terms of, does the town want to get into this business? And I think certainly it was fully disclosed that, you know, this was the, the purpose of it. So from a legal perspective, within the confines of human remains, I think Don's correct. Within the confines of, does the town have the ability to go beyond just human remains and empower, in this case, a Cemetery Commission to take on a certainly related area of burying pets as opposed to just humans? And, and I think absolutely, you know, the, the actions that were taken at town meeting were, were valid. The question that has been alluded to and on the, on the money piece, you know, we definitely did get the money wrong because we were doing something very innovative, and we got a little ahead of ourselves in terms of that before we got opinions. And we have rectified that, and there will be an article for town meeting to get the money to finish the project and reimburse the work that has already been done. Thank you, Chris.
Ed?
Yeah. In regard to what the Sluckman Howell and the Town Administrator were commenting on, I had heard last week that this was an issue in this weekend's meeting in Boston of the Municipal Association. I had the opportunity of running into our town's Council, John Giorgio, and I quizzed him on this, and it was of his opinion that the Cemetery Commission is formed under mass general law for the, and provided in general law for conducting humans in cemeteries, but that, that wasn't to say that a town couldn't assign other duties to that commission. Up at burial ground, we have one possible additional duty, maintenance of memorial squares around town is a typical one that many towns Cemetery Commissions are given charge of. And so I don't have any concern with that issue.
I do believe too Attorney Giorgio had come and gone through all of that with us in terms of the appropriation. Was the only area that we needed clarification really on, if I recall correctly. But did you have another comment on?
Yeah, just to put this in context, it's not as if I'm an animal hater. I've had, since I moved into town 30 years ago, 17 animals, two of which are currently alive, so.
We're not going to bury them.
Although the Harwich Memorial, the Howell Memorial Pet Grounds are, are a little less formal than this, especially within the context, I mean, I say this within the context, we're going to ask people for millions of dollars for searing and for other things that are essential services. We, I don't even know how we're gonna fund this, the school budget, and this seems to be, to me, like a really frivolous excursion into something that's not necessary for, as a town service.
So we are, we are actually not asking for money. We're asking if we sell lots, will we be able to spend the money we put in the general fund? fund? So, I think we're not asking for you to give us fifty-seven thousand. We're asking, if we collect the funds, can we pay back the seventy thousand that we spent? And can we then, if we have enough money to pay for the walkway, can we put in the walkway? So, we're not asking for more money. We're asking, if we have a fund and we put money in and we collect money, will we be able to make improvements upon the property?
Michael?
If, if I may, if, if we could have a point of order-
Yeah.
...if people speak at the microphone, like Ms. Kabore's comment in the back, if she would stand up to the mic and say it on TV so that the rest of the town can hear it, that would be respectful, and thank you for clarifying that-
Okay.
-because in a seventy million dollar budget this year, we're arguing now about fifty thousand dollars and paying back, and you're going to raise the money. Thank you, Rob.
Okay.
I would reiterate that I, you know, I do agree. We cannot have comments. If you have something to say, be respectful, come up to the microphone, identify yourself, and, you know, that's the nature of these meetings, is that you have an opportunity to speak, but be respectful. It's not okay to snicker from the audience. Thank you. Don?
I'm still troubled, irrespective of what's been said here, I'm still troubled with the, it's not as simple as it sounds. How do you sell, the sale of, of anything here is a sales contract. You give us this amount of money, and we will do this for it. In order for you to get to the point of selling, we pretty, we absolutely have to get to the point of authorizing us in the capital plan and paying back what's, what's on the budget. I don't, I don't know how you can enter into a contract for something that doesn't exist until that happens, and I've said that before.
Ed, did you have a comment?
Well, I, I look at the language that was passed at town meeting, and, and quite honestly, I feel it gives the Cemetery Department the ability to develop the pet cemetery and begin its operations.
I have.
And, you know, and as to it not appearing on the capital plan, I, you know, there are many instances of things that have happened around town that never appeared on the capital plan. The new restroom facility over White, White House Field, it just appeared. It wasn't ever approved on the cap- that. Granted, it was paid for by somebody else, but it still should have gone through the capital planning process. The press box there was built by volunteers. Granted, that's, but it should have appeared on the, the capital plan, I believe the, you know. Right now, where there's plans afoot, we're going to, as part of finishing off the landscaping around the new, uh, uh-
Fire station.
-fire station out in East Harwich, we're going to complete off that park. There's never been a, a plan for that park or an approval of it, but it's just been assumed that was going to be one of the things that's going to happen. That had less of an approval process than the pet burial ground has had.
Chris?
I just wanted to make two quick comments. One is, we are going to put on for the annual town meeting for the revolving fund that will allow for the process of money from the sale of these plots to go into paying for the offsetting the cost. So, there is a funding mechanism that's been laid out that will not be a taxpayer-related funding mechanism. And then the second, you know, I, I think in this, last year during some of the debate, I was at the, the FinCom meeting, and, you know, I think that the Cemetery Commission should be applauded that if there's a need and a public need that's been determined, and they're trying to address it, that I think it's perfectly reasonable, and, you know, people always want to say, "We want innovation in government." Well, here's an innovation in government. Whether people agree or disagree, that's where the discussion at town meeting occurs. And if town meeting supports it, then we move forward. If town meeting says no, then we don't. But I think I'd hate to quell, you know, initiative and innovation in the organization by having the Cemetery Commission, who is empowered to kind of look at these issues, understand that there is a need, and they're trying to present a solution that is outside of the need for taxpayers to actually support and to have it pay for itself. So, I, I just think that should be kept as part of the thought process on this endeavor.
Thank you, Chris. Did you have another comment, Ed?
Well, no, I'll leave it at that at this point.
Just, just one, I guess disagreement with, with Don and that, yeah, I'm sure we're, we're all pet lovers, but as I recall the discussion early on, that was one part of it. Part of it was the hopes of generating some income for town, that we could sell lots. And so, this isn't, if there's any money going in, it was considered to be an investment that will recoup, as you've said and others have said, so, as, you know, I, I don't see any reason not to move forward.
So, you, you're welcome to speak, identify yourself, and the other thing I want to say is, if anybody wants to speak, what I'll ask you to do is to keep it brief, and if you're going to get up and say the same thing that somebody else has said, to just concur with that person, because it can turn into a lengthy discussion. This is also not a public hearing. This is part of the Cemetery Commission's presentation, so I'll, I'll allow some public comment, but please keep it brief. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Vicki Wendell. I do live in Harwich. I am one of the nineteen thousand some odd who have registered their dog, and I am definitely in support of this, because as we all know, we can't bury our pets in our backyards. So, I, for one, would definitely be willing to donate, to help out, and I'm sure that there are many others, and even the ones who have not registered their, their pets, I'm sure would, would at least want this, at least for them to have an opportunity like this. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ed, go ahead. Oh, she, I, I was inviting them, yeah.
Hi, my name is Pamela Kendall, and I have been a resident of Harwich for well over thirty years. I currently have the remains of six German Shepherds that are ready to go into the lots as soon as we are able to do that. I also would like to say that I also own four lots down at Island Pond Cemetery, one of which my husband is in. And how I became involved in this is I approached the commission. I thought I could actually bury my pets with me, and then I was informed that I couldn't. So, this is why I feel there's also a need for this. I'm also a long-term Cape Cod Kennel Club member, member of the Bay State German Shepherd Dog Club, which is in Massachusetts, German Shepherd Dog Club of New, of America. I've done volunteer work for German Shepherd Rescue of New England, and also helped co-found Last Hope Safe Haven, stationed out of Yarmouth Port initially. So, as far as a need for something like this, there is a huge need. I am very much still in touch with the dog world, people who show, train, love their pets, do want the ability, or at least the option, to have something like this available to them. I don't know how anybody would feel about me putting six pet remains in my yard, potentially contaminating my well. I was told I really was not allowed to do that. So, what other option do I really have but to hold ashes and not know what to do with them? So, I am in support of this. I've also done some donating to the Cape Cod K nine Relief Fund, who I also know is in support of this, and I'm sure we can get a lot of donations for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, Brian Parity, Harwich resident, not for thirty years, more like three. Just a, just a couple of comments on some things that have already been stated. In terms of ashes of animals not being allowed to be buried, I don't believe that's correct. There's people here that are much more knowledgeable than I am in that regard, but I, I don't think animal ashes are considered a pollutant or a contaminant, and they can be scattered just about anywhere, anywhere you want to. I know people that have taken their animal ashes, dug a hole, put them down, and put a tree over, over the spot, and that's the memorial in, in their backyard to their animals. In terms of the comment of a hundred and four people voting yes on Article fifty-seven, I believe it was, back in two thousand and sixteen, there are two parts to that, a crematorium and a pet cemetery. The crematory part was actually, the Board of Finance actually recommended that, and then changed, reversed the recommendation for a lot of different reasons. That question remained on the ballot as question four, because it couldn't be removed, and that question was defeated at the polls by about twelve hundred votes. So, my opinion is that the will of the town and the taxpayers of the town can't be judged by a hundred and four votes. It's more appropriately judged by twelve hundred votes that defeated that, that crematory case.
So, just for clarification, though, this evening, we're talking only about the pet burial ground.
Yes, correct, but I'm just trying to put it in perspective.
Mm-hmm.
All right. In terms of this land, in terms of this proposal, I'm going to focus a little bit on, on the numbers. The Harwich taxpayers, we, the taxpayers, own this land. It's an asset that we own. It's not owned by the cemetery. It's not owned by any of you on the board. It's our land. It's worth somewhere in the neighborhood of eight hundred thousand to a million dollars. If you look at assessments for land only on half-acre lots over there, they're, they're about two hundred, two hundred fifty-five dollars on land assessments. If you, this is two point two five acres, so it could be split up into four a half-acre lot. So, that's where I come up with the eight hundred to a million dollars of, of, of value for this land. So, we, the taxpayers, are being asked to invest eight hundred to a million dollars in a pet cemetery, which is not a municipal use of, in and of itself, but more importantly, without the, we're being asked to do that without the benefit of looking at any alternatives at all. The revenue number put forth for Phase One is two, two hundred seventy thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars. It's based on the sale of fif- about fifteen hundred lots or bricks. And the seventy percent development number is a little over two million dollars. That's based on the sale of about eleven thousand lots or bricks. If you're, if you would give the benefit of the doubt that a hundred burials per year could happen, it would take fifteen years to generate the two hundred seventy thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars from Phase One, and it would take a hundred and nine years to generate the two million dollars of the seventy percent. That's about nineteen thousand dollars a year in revenue. There's no expenses put against these numbers. So, I would submit that modest expenses for water that comes out of the spouts over there, water to keep it green, money to dig, dig the plots, money to maintain the land, et cetera, if you put a modest expense of sixteen thousand dollars, let's say, against that, you're chewing up most of the profit, most of the revenue for that on a yearly basis.
I'm going to ask you to finish up, because there are others who may want to-
So, as an alternative, look at this, if taxpayers were to, were to invest eight hundred thousand dollars in treasuries at three point two five percent, which is about where it is now, it would, in the same fifteen-year period, it would be worth about one point three million dollars. In fifteen years, it'd be worth about twenty-eight million dollars. So, from a taxpayer's perspective, alternative, there are other alternatives that this land could be used for. The money from the sale of it, for example, could be used for, to derive much more benefit for the taxpayers of this town than what this is. And I submit, we have much more pressing needs and much higher complexity in terms of our needs than, than, than a pet cemetery, which in and of itself is not a municipal use.
So, for clarification, the property was offered for sale on two previous occasions, and town meeting voted down, so just-
It wasn't offered for sale.
I, I'm just making that point, so.
It wasn't offered for sale. It was put up to the town, and the town people were asked if they would like to sell it. There were no proposals such as this put in front of those people. No, there weren't.
So, so, you can just finish up your comments, that I'm just making the clarification that that was something that was looked into in the past. That's all I'm saying, so.
The not, the information I have was there was no, no proposal such as this attached to those, those town meetings. They were a simple, wait, do you want to sell it or not type of request that went in front of the town meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. That's it.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Art Bowden. I'm wearing a different hat tonight. I don't see the need, but I'll, I'm going to keep it short. I also have a pet, so I, I, I share your comments, I share your feelings. The numbers that are presented here tonight, I'm saying to myself, if those numbers are anywhere near accurate, where is the private sector? We live in a, you know, a capitalist as a society. Everyone's looking for making some money. I'm, I'm surprised people aren't standing in line, want private enterprises coming to town to want to do this project. We just had a great comment back here, people are willing to donate. If they're willing to donate, then they're willing to form a private entity and pursue this and get the town out of it. Why is the town going to be in the business of a pet cemetery? I don't know. I don't understand this. I don't go to every board meeting, but I go to a number of them, and I see constantly town people coming before the board with some lost cause, asking for money. Instead of rolling up their sleeves, soliciting funds, if they have great ideas, why aren't they out there putting this package together, forming a, I don't know, partnership, and whatever kind of entity they can put together, and come to the town and say, "Hey, we'd like to buy this land, and we'd like to have a pet cemetery here." What do you say? I'd say, "Fine, that's great. Go ahead, do it." Two other things I heard about tonight. The budget is tight. How many times I've heard from the, every board member here, "The budget is tight. We're looking at a, an explosive school budget. I don't know how we're going to make the two ends meet." So, if the, if the budgets, if, if the budget is really tight, how can we be pursuing this? And we just had a report on our IT situation. Now, I, I know nothing about IT, I'll tell you that, but, but a couple of things resonated. Obviously, you need help in the IT department. I mean, it's, apparently, it's functioning, but it's functioning just with a Band-Aid on it, so to speak. So, if we have money to spend, I, I would offer, let's, let's spend some in the IT department. Now, the pet cemetery per se, I'm not totally against that. What I'm, what I'm against is what's behind this pet cemetery. This, this is not the end of the project. If this was the end of the project, I'd be for it. It's not. The end of the project is the crematorium, and we're looking at six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars within a year or two, you know? I mean, it, it's like your kids come into you and say, "Dad, I need twenty bucks to, to fix the, the rest of my life." And I always say to my kids, I just, "Give me a figure, and I'll write the check today, and you never come back again." And they'll say, "Well, I can't do that, Dad." So, that's what I'm saying. This is mission creep, you know, the pet cemetery? I, I think it's, it's a worthy idea, but why can't it be a private entity? Raise funds and make a go of it. And obviously, according to these figures, they're going to make a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed did have a comment.
I actually just want to make a quick comment on, on something that he said. First, there's, there's water there, but it's only water so that if the dogs come and they're hungry, or thirsty, we'll have them poles. None of our cemeteries, with the exception of Evergreen Cemetery, has irrigation. So, that's, that's the only cemetery that has water that goes on. The vendors, we do not do any burials in this town. So, when we, when we, we have subcontractors that dig all of our holes, and we have subcontractors that do all the memorials. When somebody comes to me and they need a burial done, I meet with the funeral director, I go down and I pick out what lot they're going to go in, and then it goes from there. Somebody else digs the hole. I just go in witness to make sure the body goes in, and then somebody wants to sell the memorial. So, we have companies that are waiting to do this. CapeCodMemorials.net has made a website for their pet memorials already. CapeCodmemorials.net has made a website for their pet memorials already. And we have one, two, three, four, five, six different memorial dealers that are willing to do pet memorial flat stones. They've already asked for the, the size. And then we have four different people who do the internments. So when people come to me at the pet burial ground and say, I want to have my pet interred, I will be giving them a list of local people who will be then selling their services to these people. We are not going to need any more man hours. They're just going to say to me, in lot number one, grave A, we're going to inter Daisy today. So I would go over with the little flag and put the little Daisy is going in lot number A. I'm not, my guys aren't digging a hole, my guys aren't putting in the memorial, and other people in this town will be actually making revenue off of the, of, off the burial ground. So, so it's not going to cost any more people to be working.
Thank you.
So, so just a follow, just a follow-up question on that then. For example, the cost to a Harwich resident is $150 to buy one of these lots. Correct? So now, as a Harwich resident, I have to have my pet cremated, another $100. I have to buy an urn, another $100. I have to get a stone engraved, another $100. I have to hire a service to dig the hole, another $50. So I'm up to about $500 to take my pet's ashes and have it buried in the cemetery. So in terms of your need, you list 19,000 licensed dogs as a, as a need, which isn't a need. It's just licensed dogs. But anyway, if you believe in the numbers, then we'll just focus on Harwich for a minute. 52% of the Harwich are 60 and older, fixed income. How many Harwich people with dogs are going to spend $500 when they can take the ashes, put them in the ground and plant a tree over it? I, I just don't get it. The numbers aren't going to work.
I think that we'll move on to, does anyone else in the public who wants to speak? Michael, did you have a comment?
Yeah, my only comment on that, sir, is I'm a Harwich taxpayer as well. So is my whole family. They've been here for my whole life and theirs as well. I'd pay a thousand. So trying to put a number on what you would bury your pet, some people could probably try and back that number down. I'd pay more than a thousand to bury my pet.
No, we're not, you can.
It's not debatable.
So if you would actually take a seat, this gentleman here is going to speak now. Thank you.
A question and a comment. I understand what he's saying about we could make a million dollars if we did XYZ, but that aside, is this project going to cost the taxpayers money in, in a true sense that?
The, the answer is no. And the reason why is because the general fund is what we fund the police, fire, and other operations. General fund primarily comes from the taxpayer. This, the way it's constructed to avoid the taxpayers having to foot any of this, is structured to pay for itself through the sale of the lots.
Okay.
So only the users of the lots would actually then incur the cost.
And then my comment, I have a growing concern. I grew up on the Cape in Kootenai, and we moved to Pleasant Bay Road three years ago. And in three years, I've noticed a lot of trees going down and a lot of construction going up. Within a mile radius, I would say, and don't hold me to that exact, 20 homes have been put in along with other construction. And I see this as more trees being cut down and, you know, green lawn or whatever, space. I just feel like we're, we're losing the character of the Cape at a rapid rate. And although it's better than a smokestack, I don't view just open space as, you know, good for wildlife. So that's my comment.
Thank you.
Matt Sutten, Harwich. I won't go over the letter I presented to you. I will next week. I want to be, suggest being creative. I'll, I'll try to be positive with this, with the need for a pet cemetery, though I will tell you, it is within Massachusetts state law to bury your dog in your backyard. My wife and I have buried a lot of dogs. So it's not to say that everybody is going to want to spend three, four, $500 on the burial of their animal to look, go sometime when they go to, on the way to the dump and look at a little plaque about their dog. It's crazily optimistic, this presentation. Loads, loads of talk about what will be done, but very little talk about what things will cost. Doesn't sound like, it sounds like a business plan that I would have made when I was a kid in front of my father, and he would have smiled. So what I say to you is, you've, we, we know we've got four lots that are worth a certain amount of money and once sold will produce revenue for the town to fix roads and support schools. We also know the town has plenty of other land. And my suggestion would be, if I had to go along with us, that why aren't we being creative about cleaving off some land from somewhere, the highway department somewhere, and creating a pet cemetery, simple one without a crematorium, that would be for sure. But the point is, we'd have, we'd be a million bucks for the good, for whatever we were going to spend money on the cemetery for. This is, this is illogical to me, totally illogical. I, I just don't understand how the Finance Committee or anybody could say, I'm going to pass in a million bucks and use a piece of ground I've already got when I could go across the street to the highway department and find that same amount of ground. I know when you, when the town takes land bank funds that aren't, don't have conservation easements, it's in the town's right to modify the use of the land. It doesn't, doesn't have to maintain a passive use restriction. So you've got plenty of land out there. This is, this is, this has gotten to be just a peering down a very small hole by a lot of people. Just don't get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'm, I'm going to limit it to, to two more speakers. It's, you know, at this point, we've heard the same topics again and again.
Just really quick. My name's Elizabeth Kennedy. I'm a Harwich resident and born and raised here on Cape Cod. And I am going to bring up something that hasn't been said yet. So this is my dog Daisy, and I do have a pet Gracie who does need to be buried. I'm holding her ashes. So we can bury our pets in our backyards, but we're going to sell our house someday. Let's face it, we don't stay there forever. And so to have somewhere that we can bury our pet, that we know we can always go there and visit them, is important. And I know that people that aren't necessarily animal lovers don't get that, because I used to be that person. It's different. It's like when you, your pet's your family. And I can bury, I could have buried Gracie back in Beckett where I lived, but guess what? We sold that house. So I wouldn't have anywhere to go see her and just to go feel and be close to her. So I am very much in support of this project, and I just wanted to bring that up because I think that's something that we, hasn't been said yet.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Tom Birch, Harwich resident since 1979. Two owners of property, own two properties on Queen Anne, one commercial, one residential. I've been in the game since 1979. Research the property. This land is extremely, extremely valuable. I've researched potentials land for sale, commercial, industrial on Cape Cod. 14 lots available. P-town to Bourne. I also looked in the Home Rule Charter, looking for anything, anywhere in here that says we should be comparing Bourne, Brewster, Dennis, Yarmouth to justify a project in our town and take a million dollar asset and turn it into an expense. All the numbers are fluffed up and all that great. I'm going to ask some questions, and if somebody can answer them when we come back next week in, in, in respect to time. Has this been before planning board review?
Has it been through the planning board?
According to the, the woman in the office, no. In review of the Home Rule Charter, it states in section 6, 9-6-2, that any project $100,000 or greater must go before a capital plan. Must. I don't believe that's the case. It was built in bits and pieces, 5,000, 3,000, 2,000, 22,000, 8,000, 76,000. I met with the guys doing the walk, and they said, this is crazy. Wants to do it in pieces. We can do a much better job and more cost effective if we do the whole thing. He did not understand that. Why was, why was it allowed to happen the way that it did? We say, oh, we didn't know, it's a new thing, whatever. We're all educated people. We know what's going on. We pay the town administrator to oversee this. You guys oversee it. I questioned it, and I questioned it, and I questioned it. And you guys said, oh, she can do what she's doing. We can appropriate the funds to this matter. I go, I don't believe so. I sent it to the Finance Committee, and they did it. Everyone's 100% unanimous. One person. Town Council said, we cannot do what we're doing. The 76, 82, whatever amount of money that was used to build all this, to pay these contractors, they went out to bid, yep. It should have gone out as a major project, like a harbor, a fire department, another building in town. And it didn't happen. And it didn't happen because we allowed it to happen. So two last lots sold on that street, half acre lots, 257,000, 252,000. Those people are generating daily income through taxes, through revenue, to support our schools, to support our town, support our, all these things that we say we don't have money for. And one other thing, do we ask the fire chief to, to look at Bourne, to see what their fire needs are, to determine what kind of truck we need? We don't need to be in the business of a pet cemetery. I'm not against a pet cemetery. I'm against using that land for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Last speaker.
Madam Chairman, Board, Bob Pianus on, on Bank Street. I, I just, I know I don't want to go back over the same ground, but I think it needs to be, something needs to be just emphasized. And we see it in the papers. We are, we have budget problems. We have the school problem, we have a sewage problem, $22 million, new fire station. And, and we're looking for places, you know, to save money. And this is an opportunity, and I'm not against the pet cemetery. I think actually, I'm pretty comfortable with the idea. And I think Robin has done a nice job doing a presentation on it. So I commend her for her being an advocate for this particular project. But I think that we as citizens need to be advocates for the things that we need, not the things that we want. And I understand, I can sense of, you know, the board, that the people are very much in favor of this. But I can tell you and assure you, there are a lot of people in the town that are not in favor of this, not against the pet cemetery, but against taking this piece of land with a, with a value of approximately a million dollars. And Tom has enumerated the value that you get from that year after year after year versus an expense. And the one issue I have with this proposal, as I did with the pet crematory, is show me the cost. Show me a business plan. Show me how you're going to make this thing work. And I know Brian's done the numbers, and the numbers aren't working. So we're going to be left with a situation where five, 10, 15 years out, we may not fill the lots, and then we don't, we've lost the land. I say, yes, find a, find a parcel of land that's appropriate for the needs of this particular town, not the entire Cape. And if you look at the numbers that Robin presented, you know, the, the growth in dog population based on those numbers is flat. It's not a growth. There's no growth there from year to year to year. It's, it's absolutely flat. So we're doing a business plan based on, you know, a trajectory that isn't going up and a potential for remarketing this land because it's in a better position to market now, in a better market. It's, you know, the real estate market is much stronger than it was in '06. It's an improved lot, which is easier to sell. And take the proceeds, as has been mentioned earlier, take those proceeds, buy some, buy some additional land, buy some affordable housing land, conservation land with that $800 to $1 million. And then you're still making revenue year after year. So, and I can assure you, there are many people in town that are not in favor of this particular proposal as it sits, but are not, but clearly are in favor of a pet cemetery. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Can I just make one last point?
Actually, I'm going to move on to the next. We've spent enough time on this.
This is kind of important.
Well, I'm going to ask you, if you have further comments, you can submit them to the board. I've given you a lot of time this evening.
Then question, are, are you going to vote on anything tonight related to this?
No, we're not.
Okay.
No.
No. It was just a presentation.
It's already on the Capitol plan. It's already.
Right.
It's on the Capitol plan.
Okay. Michael?
If I may. Chris, just in regards to the taking in 1997, obviously, this is coming back. So May 1997, taking of land by eminent domain for open space or other municipal purposes. Can you just give us a legal opinion on what that means, so that we have that?
Can I ask a question a little differently?
No, actually, you know what? I've given you plenty of opportunities. I'd appreciate if you'd, if you'd sit down. Thank you. I appreciate your cooperation. So now we're moving on to our agenda item, and I would appreciate you being quiet so we can resume our meeting. Thank you. So notice of change, changes to the proposed land use control regulation. Adopt as part of the new sewer use regulations.
So Madam Chair, just to provide a, a quick overview, I, I did prepare a, a specific motion if someone wants to, to read it. But in the, in the sewer to land use.
Yeah, can we hold on until that? Thank you, Chris.
Madam Chair, just in, in terms of what's being requested this evening, is that the board had previously voted a, the draft land use control regulation. It has been reviewed by the folks at the Department of Housing and Community Development in a memo dated December 13th. They did make a slight revision to the regulations as presented. That revision was to just have the approach of the sewers be phased in. Specifically, they have it phased in, in two ways. One, every, all the flow that would go to the town of Chatham is part of the IMA, the $300,000, is what is being approved now. And then at a later date, if the DHY comes to fruition and we send flow to that plant, then they want to have a second opportunity to review the design on that and the flow on that. So the motion that I have typed up here is move to adopt the land use control wastewater flow management regulation as part of the current sewer use regulations, and further that the wastewater commission will approve phased approvals for wastewater flow to the sewer service area in the form of the intermunicipal agreements and construction of the wastewater treatment facility that outlines maximum available sewer flows.
Thank you, please.
Yeah, why don't you give it to me, so I make a official motion. Madam Chair, I move to adopt the land use control wastewater flow management regulation as part of the current sewer use regulations. Further, the wastewater commissioners will approve phased approvals for wastewater flow to the sewer service areas in the form of intermunicipal agreements and construction of wastewater treatment facility that outlines maximum available sewer flows.
Seconded. Seconded. Any further discussion? Any questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, Chris.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Town Administrator's report.
I will try to make this brief. I just really wanted to provide, and we will probably put on a future agenda. I have a meeting tomorrow with the folks from the Harwich Conservation Trust to talk about the partnership with, between the town and the trust on the Colebrook, the Robert Smith Colebrook Restoration Project. We did include in that materials, the, right now, we have a 30% nitrogen reduction. We're trying to go to 50%. I think that was a suggestion made, a good suggestion.
Right, and I appreciate having that in there.
Definitely included that in there. You will notice that we didn't put in the specific sharing arrangement, the percentages. Hopefully, we'll have a session tomorrow and, and get a sense from HCT, kind of what they're thinking in terms of that. So that is something that's still in, in, in the works. I wanted to try to get an advanced copy to, to the board so that way you knew what we were at least thinking about in terms of that partnership. And we'll be back with a, hopefully, a final agreement, assuming that our discussions go favorably. On the next item, just, we did include, there was some question in regards to the assistant town administrator job description. There was no changes made to the description, so we just provided that for input. The ad is out. We have gotten a fair amount of activity. I know I personally have tried to do a little bit more outreach to, to folks to try to generate additional interest in that position.
Can I interrupt?
Sure.
We're in a hurry. We're in a hurry about it, this last question.
Yep.
On the, on both these items. On the Colebrook, we have the HT, HCT has only probably reserve right to final say in all matters. And then the town reserves the right to have approval, approval prior to bidding. Could you clarify what, what that means?
Well, which section? I'm sorry, I-
Section two. You go to the page where three is project management, so two paragraphs just above that.
I think one of the things is a, a recognition that the, the property is not ours. It is HCT's property. Most likely, too, the, the contracting could be done through the state, through the folks at DER, the Division of Ecological Restoration.
But I was wondering about the, what, what, what right does it give us? The right to have prior approval prior to bidding?
So that, the, that paragraph, the town reserves the right to have approval prior to bidding on the final design. I think, just as a, for instance, if we're gonna go in and partner up where we're gonna do nitrogen attenuation or remediation, which is our primary focus, if they were to put together a plan that didn't get to the fifty percent and our consultants thought it only got to forty percent, we would wanna have the ability to, to not approve that plan. So what we, we have here is, once a plan has been adopted, that, and the one that has been discussed, that will get us to that fifty percent nitrogen removal, we need to make sure that that gets constructed as designed.
Okay.
Hopefully that was clear.
Don?
Before he goes on to the next item, since we were on the ATA description, I don't know how anybody else on the board feels, but we have never gotten to the point of actually dissecting where the wheels fell off on the last appointment. And I would not be willing, even with this description, to vote for any candidate until we wind up figuring out, in, as our legal counsel suggested in, in part two, what, what we would-
Which is gonna be next week.
Yeah, what we would negotiate and, and how that would be couched. And that certainly would include what training and/or performance improvement programs we would have in place as expectations because it clearly was too fuzzy. We're working on Assistant Town Administrator number four now, in five years, five-plus years.
I, I participated in the, in the search committee, so I, I will say that I don't think it was too fuzzy, in my opinion. I mean, ultimately, we had a, a review and we had a methodical approach. Not, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, but ultimately, we're gonna have that discussion next week anyway, on top of the fact that, you know, not everybody does work out, so, you know, it's not the right fit for everybody. So we just need to be careful about how we do that, so.
I, I wanna go a slightly different direction, that I've suggested before, so it's not gonna come as a surprise. But I think as the, as a board and, and with Chris, the six of us, I'd like to see us agree to what gap in town we're trying to, that we can most help the town move forward. You know, as Assistant Administrator, it's sort of general purpose. But I'm more comfortable if we were to decide that, what do we want? Where do we see our gap? Is it procurement? Do we want someone that's focused on procurement and can learn with Chris's mentoring? The other aspects of town? Is it HR? Is it legal? Is it project management? We have a lot of things going on in project management. So if that were, would be our focus, you know, with this general job description, and then we rely on Chris to mentor, to bring in someone else who brings it together. But I'm more comfortable trying to have a, a discussion amongst us on, you know, what do we need to fill? And then get that person that, that has that skill set, but also has the interest in the, well, no further than that, to, to eventually, you know, our goal is to have a backup, so we're not like IT where we're, you're our failure, in, in that sense.
So I think, I think that we all agree that we needed to have further discussion on where we wanna go with that. And my, my intention is to agenda that item for Monday.
Okay.
And just if I remember, I think, Ed, you had volunteered to be on the search committee this time?
Indeed.
So, you know, I have opened it up and tried to get board input in an effort to try to diversify the, you know, the applicant, or the, the process. I would just say, I've been doing this a long time, and, you know, anytime you get into the people business of hiring people, it, it's, it's an art and, and more than a science.
Michael?
Yeah, I, I think the conversation next week's gonna be a great conversation. I, I would also like to understand, you know, where we're falling apart on this. And if you read the current job description, I think we're asking an awful lot of one person. And I think that we do need to dissect the job description, but we also need to recognize that we already advertised for it.
That's right.
Chris, you did also mention you were gonna switch out everybody on the interview. Everyone on the team except for myself. Okay. Yep. Thank you. And that, I don't wanna-
To Michael's point, let me just mention, the, it's already been posted, but I think the posting is broad enough that we can focus on whatever we think as a group our gap is.
Right, it should be a useful discussion.
So I don't think that prevents us from having that discussion.
No. Any other comments? Chris?
Just a, a last couple of things. Just on the additional liquor license legislation, I think there was some question about when the governor signed it, so I just put that in the packet. So it was signed by the governor on January fourth. We did get the application in, and that's been scheduled, the public hearing's been scheduled. For, I think one out of the three has submitted. I just wanted to also just, you know, I, I do try very carefully to kinda respect the wishes of employees. And I just wanted to, Bob Cafarelli, our longtime town engineer, had kind of a private person, a, a quiet person, and, and he did not wanna have any kind of show of affection or anything. So it was a little bit unusual to kinda respect that and honor that 'cause I think a lot of people probably would like to say nice things about him. He wanted to wait till after he had moved on, so I was respectful of his wishes, his wishes. I just wanted to really thank him for his service. You know, there's a lot of people that I've worked with over the years, and I thought Bob was a, a solid professional that did a lot of good things for the, the community. With that being said, too, I try not to have moss grow at all on a rolling stone, so we already are working on the ad. So the idea is that we would replace the town engineer in kind. So we, we will advertise based upon the existing. I think that any, I think previously the board has voted the importance of a town engineer in the surveyor, just so the town engineer has some say in terms of the surveyor. What we'll do is, we will kinda simultaneously recruit with the idea of trying to get an engineer on thirty days in advance of the surveyor, so they can be part of the process and actually help us maybe review the applications. So we, we are proceeding to fill that position, and we will have the ad out shortly. But really, out of respect for Bob Cafarelli, he wanted to keep it quiet, so we, we took a little different tact than I normally would have.
Thank you, Chris.
And that concludes my report this evening. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Don?
No, thank you.
Ed?
Nope, I'm fine.
I'd like to, Chris, if we could, try and arrange an open meeting law class for the chairs of committees. It's been brought to my attention, and I went and reviewed. There's a lot of agenda items showing up, other business or old business with no topic, and there's a lot being talked about. It's a lot to ask these chairs, which most of them are volunteers, to know all of these laws. But if we could facilitate another class here, that would be great.
I think, can I have a second?
Sure.
Michael brings up an excellent point. I did attend the workshop at the MMA along with Kevin. And I have to say, what we think the open meeting law encompasses is even us. It's, it's more intensive now, including what minutes have to contain, and they have to reflect. If somebody spoke more, there needs to be more in the minutes than if somebody spoke less. This is a subject that I think we need to revisit through KP Law for everybody, because it's a lot more than it used to be.
Thank you.
Time's up.
I was gonna say something, too.
It's too bad. You just missed out. Alarm on them.
That's it. It's done. You can't, no, I'm only-
Actually, I don't need to. No, I was just gonna say that we, several of us attended the MMA conference and, I guess maybe my interest, but there was a lot of discussions on accessory apartments, affordable housing, we, and housing in general, you know. We know also senior housing, people that wanna downsize availability. And, you know, we had, we discuss a lot here, but we're not alone in, in Massachusetts. Everyone's trying to find solutions, so. Our, we're trying to move ahead in, in that regard, but also housing in, in general.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Well, yeah. I just wanna reiterate that Richard was in front of us tonight, Richard Waystack, Board of Assessors. Ten days left to put in for your abatement. The deadline is February first. And also Pamela Goswald, Roswald, excuse me, asked for the committee chairs to reach out to her. She's trying to organize a, and Pamela's with the Harwich Voter Committee. She's trying to organize a meet your committee representatives forum. So Pamela has asked if you are a chair of a committee to reach out to her at five oh eight two four one zero two three zero. And that's all I have. Can I get a motion?
Motion to adjourn? Second.
So we are, thank you.